Form all five regular members are present. For staff, are there any added agenda items tonight?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll take that as a no. There were so, there was a legal notice, there are four of them. I'm gonna read them all together, that's what appeared in the newspaper. East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a regular meeting on Tuesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty PM via the remote video conferencing platform Zoom. The following public hearings will be held. PZ twenty-one dash oh-six SJK Properties LLC, text amendment application to the East Windsor zoning regulation, section eight oh-two multifamily development district known as the MFDD. Public hearing number two, E twenty-two-one dash ten, South Prospect Hill Road LLC, text amendment application to section five oh-two permitted uses in business and industrial districts, highway interchange zones special use to allow certain drive-through establishments into section five oh-two-point-four A prohibited uses. Public hearing number three, PZ dash twenty-two-one dash eleven, re-subdivision application, twenty-four Rockville Road, two lot re-subdivision. And public hearing number four, PZ dash twenty-two-one dash twelve, special use permit application, twenty-four Rockville Road, to allow the creation of a rear lot. A copy of the applications are available in Town Clerk's webpage and on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town website. All interested persons may appear on the online meeting and public hearings to be heard on this topic. Dated March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, East Windsor, Connecticut. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer on March first, as well as March eighth, twenty-twenty-one. This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Are there any comments in the public for something that's not already on tonight's published agenda? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, I'll take that as a no. Next up, approval of minutes, March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, regular meeting. Fellow commission members, I noticed something myself. That should be discussed on page six. Line two fifty-four and two fifty-five. At the end of the sentence, it just doesn't make sense, and I think it's a carryover from another section. And I'm recommending that we strike from the record, AWA, Mr. Depew. So that's the only comment or recommended change I have. Does any commission member have any other changes or edits?
No, I had the same problem in line two fifty-five.
Do you have any, are you in agreement with the proposed changes?
That's fine unless Peg has another name. Or another.
That Mr. Depew was talked about in another area, I think it just a cut and paste. It's not a big deal. If there are no other changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I have one, excuse me, I have one.
Go ahead, Frank.
Nine sixty-eight. I think the word is not divine what triggers a minor major, not a big deal, but probably worth mentioning.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm okay.
Well, there are two proposed changes, some would like to offer a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from regular meeting number seventeen ninety-nine, March twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, with two edits. On line two fifty-five. End after the word public and strike the remaining, remaining, I'll call them words and on line nine sixty-eight. Change the word from divine to define with an F instead of a V.
Here's our motion for approval with those two changes, is there a second? Commissioner Gowdy, I got you first, any discussion? Here are none, I call for a vote, all is in favor, either say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I see five hands raised, so that's unanimous, thank you. Next up, receipt of applications, there were two. PZ twenty-two-one dash thirteen for fourteen Sullivan Farm Road, special use permit application for an accessory apartment. And the proposed public hearing date for this was April twenty-seventh, not this meeting, next meeting. And the second receipt of application is a PZ twenty-two-one dash fourteen, one forty-eight North Road, Unit Four, special use permit application for a gift shop. Also, the anticipated public hearing date is April twenty-seventh for this one. Under continued public hearings, PZ twenty-two-one dash oh-nine, one twenty-four, Newbury Road, special use permit application for contractors' office and storage yard.
Good evening, I'm the engineer, Robert Arsenal. We were here two weeks ago, since then, we've received our wetlands approval last Wednesday, and we received the comments from the town planner and also from Mr. Norton. Pretty much resolving most of the issues. So the only outstanding issues we had in the memo from the Planning Department had to do with sidewalks. Probably we'd be looking for a fee in lieu of sidewalks on that item. As far as the lighting goes, we will be providing more information on the lighting, exactly where it's going to be on the building and making sure that it's completely shielded. And we can add some screening to that rear storage area that we showed the last time. I could try and share my screen here if you'd like.
Sure, why don't you go ahead and try.
Okay. There we go. Is that coming through?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we'll be putting screening along, along the western boundary over in this location for the, for the, for the storage area, probably like four-foot-high arborvitaries or something to access some plantings rather than a fence. And pretty much everything else was, was resolved, I believe. So we'd be glad, be glad to answer any questions you may have. We also added, as a result of a comment from the public, they wanted to see a stop sign and a stop bar at our driveway, which we did add, so that's on the plans as well. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, I think we covered pretty much everything at the last hearing.
Okay, before I take additional public comment or query the commissioners, Jim, we'll start with you, do you have any questions for, for the engineer?
I have no further questions. All he needs to submit is just a cut of what kind of lights he has, that can probably be done in-house. Probably LED wall packs in the building.
Okay, fine. Mike, do you have any comments?
I just would ask, I guess more of staff, have all the concerns in from Lenny's memo been addressed?
Yep, they have.
Okay. Then I have nothing further.
Mr. Gobin?
I'm set.
Commissioner Gowdy?
I'm all set, everything's okay with me.
Okay. This is a, a public hearing, continue public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the public? If you do, go ahead and if someone wants to speak to some, I'm trying to recognize if you have your hand up, but please feel free to speak up. Anybody wish to speak on this public, continue public hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. Um, so at this point, I don't have any additional concerns. And is there anything else to add? On, on, on this one, from the applicant's point of view?
No, we believe, we've addressed everything, so we're, we're satisfied at this point.
Okay, so the next step, what I'm planning to do is, is taking a vote to close the public hearing. And assuming the public hearing is, is, is closed, we have a, an item later on in the agenda under new business, we'll take up the special use permit application, that's where we'll actually vote on the application in and of itself. So at this time, if there is no additional comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for PZ twenty-two-one dash oh-nine.
I'll move to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty-two-one dash oh-nine, one twenty-four, Newbury Road, for contractors' office and storage yard. The applicant is Scott Coda, the owner is Newbury Group LLC.
There's a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none, I call for a vote, all is in favor, say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see five hands, the public hearing is closed. As I just mentioned, we'll, we'll take up this, this item again later on in our agenda tonight under new business, we'll be considering the special use permit application. Okay, thank you, moving along to item B under continued public hearings. PZ twenty-two-one dash oh-seven, one forty-two North Road, special use permit application for a barber shop. The applicant is Brett Faraday. Is Brett, was somebody here this evening?
Hi.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Can you just kindly kind of go over the, some of the finer details about the proposed business? And first of all, I, obviously, we all have info, we all have what you submitted, but where exactly is, is the proposed building? And who, and who are your neighbors, the adjacent businesses?
Next to me is a bakery.
Okay.
I don't remember the exact name of it, it's actually a bake decorating service, and then next to me is Jay Salon.
Okay. Can you just kind of go over the highlights of, of your, your proposed business?
Yeah, in regards to what, like the name or the, how the layout will be?
Yeah, 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 those details, please.
So it's gonna be called Vintage Cuts, I'm going for like a really kind of like old-school feel, like an old-school traditional barber shop feel. And my demographic is pretty much just gentlemen, so, or men, so I don't really do women too much. I went and spoke with the owner of Jay Salon before I had even really considered this place as a location, and she said that she predominantly just does females, so she said that it would actually work out well and we could kind of go off of each other. Other than that, I'm a pretty busy barber right now, I worked at a popular barber shop in Enfield, and so that's why I'm doing my own.
Thank you. So we'll query the commission members, Frank, we'll start with you, do you have any comments for Brett?
No, I have a question for him.
Yeah.
Brett, can you play baseball like I think your father did?
Uh, yeah, actually, I could, I used to be able to anyway, yeah.
Other than that, I, I think it's great to have you in town as a barber, and I look forward to getting my hair cut with you.
Oh, that's awesome.
Ian, do you have any comments or questions for Brett?
I do not.
Jim, how about you?
Is the location, is that Bassdale Plaza, is it in the front plaza or the rear plaza?
The front one.
Okay, I have no further questions.
And Mike Lozowski?
Yeah, actually, you, you addressed my, my question, reached out to the neighboring business that, you know, I, I thought it was a very similar type of business right next door, but if the demographics are definitely different, then, then it should be, it should work out well for you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, are there any comments in the audience on this proposed special use application for a barber shop? Feel free to speak out if you have any comments.
Good.
Okay, I, I'm not seeing anybody wishing to speak. Okay. With that, does anyone have any final questions for Brett before we consider closing the public hearing? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I will move to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty-one dash seven for a special use permit application for a barber shop to be located at one forty-two North Road, Unit E.
There's a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none, I call for a vote, all is in favor, say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, the public hearing is closed, and we'll be taking this up again later on in the agenda under new business, we'll actually be considering the actual application itself, so Brett, please stay tuned, we'll be with you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to new public hearings. PZ dash twenty-two-one dash oh-six SJK Properties LLC, text amendment application to the East Windsor zoning regulations, section eight oh-two multifamily district, excuse me, multifamily development district, MFDD. And I think I seen Chris. Attorney Smith, are you there? Yes.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, good evening, for the record, my name is Chris Smith. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Walter and Pearson, and I do appear before you this evening behalf of the applicant SJK Properties. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn the presentation over to my client, Merrick Kemet, who I think everyone is familiar with, Merrick.
Thank you, Chris, hello, everyone. Merrick Kemet, representing SJK Properties, and as you know, Attorney Chris Smith is on for technical support. Before you, as a text amendment application to section eight zero-two-point-four of the East Windsor regulations, more specifically, the MFDD regulations. To start off, how we got here, right now, we are proposing a single-family homes in rural area that will fall under a homeowners association, HOA, also known as a community association, if you say. Last year sometime midsummer, we had meetings with town officials. We did receive favorable responses from then, from them. And in October of last year, we were before this board, and we also received favorable input. Following that positive reactions, we did make application for a text amendment to the MFDD regulations. But then we later withdrew those applications to revise their language to more properly address the concerns from the commission as well as the public. This new application now provides a more restrictive version of the text amendment that we originally proposed. I want to start off with the statement of justification, you, you should have that in your packet. Before I get into the details of this, well, basically, the text amendment promotes housing diversity, which is provided within the POCD. Throughout the MFDD regulations, specifically section eight oh-two, single-family housing opportunities are encouraged and permitted. Our project, which utilizes an HOA field, falls under a condominium or community association type of a development. More specifically, there is a definition under section eight oh-two-point-three for condominiums, which states in part, is a one-family dwelling unit owned in fee simple, which may be part of an attached, comma detached, comma semi-detached or multifamily structure with any other common, with any other common areas owned in common with the association of other unit owners. Also, in that section, further down in eight oh-two-point-two-two of the regulation, there is a section called change of zone. So in this section, it says, it states that no development plan or special permit for residential condominiums shall be approved, shall be approved only in the MFDD zone. So there lies the conundrum, so the MFDD zone is entirely misleading. The MFDD zone is not only for multifamily developments like apartment complexes, but it also applies to single-family housing, exactly what we are proposing. This text amendment is insistent with the POCD and the town of East Windsor Comprehensive Plan and will not adversely impact public health, safety, or welfare. Now, you also have the, the handout regarding the actual language. Do you have that in front of you, or if I have to put it on the screen, I can. But I want to just go through this in detail so you can understand where we're coming from and how we're addressing everyone's concerns. New language to be added to section eight oh-two-point-four is the substitute subsection D where existing D will now become E. The goal here in this subsection was to make this text, text language more restrictive to address the public's concerns and to move forward with the development of our property. To start, the biggest change with this revision, which was ultimately withdrawn last time, is that we are not requesting an increase in density, that is not part of this application whatsoever. New subsection B is limited to only category C. Category C, according to the regulations, are condominiums, residential, cooperative, residential or community associations. New subsection D is not intended for any other category but C, so no apartments or elderly housings fall under this subsection. So to read, it states that the site is located within a rural area as identified on a residential growth guide plan in the plan of conservation development as amended, as long as all of the following conditions have been satisfied. What that means is that there are four conditions to follow, which I'll go into detail, but all four conditions have to be met for this type of development to occur within a rural area. Number one, the property is to be developed is limited to detached, single-family residential units. What that means is, what that means is there will be no common wall buildings or multifamily structures are permitted. So basically, these are all single-family houses as, as they stand. Number two, the property shall be located within a sewer service area. This is new, this was not part of the other text amendment. You also have in front of you is the, is the updated sewer service area of the town. And if you know on that plan, all the way to the right along the Ellington Town Line, there is only one area in white, which is the sewer area, which is the Quarry Meadow subdivision. Additionally, this was a concern, I believe it was Commissioner Gowdy's concerns of what other properties in town are affected by this text amendment regulation. So what I did was, I took the sewer service area plan, superimposed it over the residential growth plan, so you could see what properties would be affected. And what I did was, I outlined most of those properties, and I gave them their zoning classification, so it was easier to determine, you know, what we are looking at. You can see that the Quarry Meadow subdivision along the Ellington Town Line is the only area affected within the R-three zone. Other areas in town are, is the large property behind St. Catherine Cemetery, that is the R-two zone. There is a section along the railroad track, which is the M-one zone. You also have the MFDD zones where Scannaglen condominiums falls within a rural area, as well as the mansions at Canyon Ridge, which is also in a rural area, those are already existing, as we know. And there are a handful of other properties to the northwest, which are located in the A-one zone, but I believe most of those areas are wet areas anyway. So for reasons of this regulation, this text amendment for the R-three zone, there's only one area in town that this would be affected. Moving on to number three. It states that the minimum setback for dwelling units from any residential zone property shall be increased to one hundred feet. What I mean there is that, according to section eight oh-two-point-one-five subsection C, it reads that structure shall be set back a minimum of fifty feet from any property boundary. What we are proposing, we are proposing to double that distance to increase the buffering. Number four. Any additional means of egress except as required by section eight oh-two-seventeen H shall only be permitted by a collector or arterial roadway. Now, section eight oh-two-seventeen H refers to emergency access drive, which is required for safety reasons, there's nothing that can be done about that. But I want to clarify what collector and arterial mean. A collector road is a road that is collecting other roads to an arterial, basically such as Depot Street would be considered a collector street. And I believe Main Street would also be considered a collector or a major collector. An arterial is one that the collectors feed, which is like Route one forty, that would be that. Typically subdivision roads, for example, Sullivan Farm Road, that's considered a local street, that's a local road, that is not a collector or an arterial, so no secondary access would be allowed through a local street. Now, that pretty much outlines the proposed text amendment, I tried to go into detail and obviously, there's gonna be questions on road, and I'll definitely answer those as, as the night goes on. But I also want to bring attention to the CROG referral, which was dated April eighth, and they also, they stated that there is no conflict with regional plans and policies as far as they're concerned. That's pretty much brief in a nutshell of what we're proposing and how we got here, and I'm gonna hand this over to Chris to go over any technical issues that I may have not gone over in detail.
Okay, thank you, Merrick, for the record, Chris Smith, again, and just, just to, for purposes of a conclusion and summary, as, as the commission may recall and members of the public, the initial application was entertained at a public hearing in January of this year. And at that point, as Merrick indicated, there were two applications. There was a zone text amendment to the MFDD, and then a zone change to rezone property owned by SJK to the MFDD. Both of those were withdrawn, and they, and only the text amendment has been resubmitted after very substantial modifications. And what I think is important for everyone, I know the commission understands this, I just don't think that everyone who's possibly listening to this meeting understands this, that a text amendment is really the first step, it's just tightening up the MFDD regulations. The next step would be an application for a zone change request to rezone a property that might qualify for the zone, the MFDD zone. The Planning and Zoning Commission has extremely broad discretion. Some people might even say almost absolute to say no to a request for a change of zone. I like to tell clients that if the commission, in my opinion, can essentially say it's denied because the moon is blue, they just don't want it. And, and the courts are not going to reverse. And and the courts are not going to reverse a denial on his own change. It's only happened once in a in in the entire zoning that I'm aware of. And those were very unique situation. That was a very unique situation. But a zone change provides you with quite a bit of discretion. Just by doing a zone text amendment, does it automatically mean that any property that may qualify for a zone change suddenly has that zone? That would require again a request for a change of zone to this commission. And again, the commission has extremely broad discretion to determine whether or not the zone change would be in compliance with the comprehensive. It's a plan in your plan of development. I think it's fair to say that Merrick and his family listened to the comments from not only the commission, but also from the public during those two hearings back in January. And based on that, we drew the application. And as I've indicated already, and Merrick did. The there were major changes done to the zone text amendment. They've been narrowed down. And they're very restrictive. And the whole idea is to provide, I think, security to both the commission and more importantly to the public. Relative to the M F T D regulations. So for example, there's no increase in density that's being proposed in this zone text amendment. There was an increase in density with the prior one. There's a limitation to single family detached dwellings. The zone text amendment, as Merrick indicated, does increase buffers with all adjacent residentially zone properties from what's currently provided at 50 feet. It would be increased to 100 feet. Egress and increase or ingress and egress are limited to collector or arterial roads. Those are major roads. Can't go through a subdivision. And that's obviously to protect certain subdivisions in the town. And one in particular that's adjacent to property that's owned by by the family. And as Merrick indicated, it also provides that any property qualifying for the M F T D for this type of use. Would have to be would have to be within a sewer service area. So this is far more restrictive. Than the zone text amendment that was submitted before relative to any use in this section of the M F T D regulations if the commission were to approve it. And again, that's only the first step. The next step would be for anybody who would qualify and as. Merrick indicated, he did that analysis for you. You do have an overlay and I'm looking at it on my screen now. It's entitled residential growth and guide plan and it's. And it has different areas, very limited number of properties that would even qualify for this use under the M F T D. So there's quite a bit of protection in here. Relative to this proposal for not only the commission, but also for the public. And in in closing, I would respectfully request that the commission and the public recognize the efforts to be responsive to comments received with the prior application. Be recognized and hopefully you'll consider acting favorably upon this application. And I would like to reiterate that there's not only not only there's not a zone change application before the commission this evening that's part of this public hearing. But there's certainly no specific site development proposal for any property in the town of East Windsor that's pending before the commission this evening. This is simply a modification to a small section of the M F T D regulations. So Merrick, unless you have anything further, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and professional staff. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. On behalf of S J K this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So why don't we start with the comments or query the commissioners before we open up the public comment? So Commissioner Thurs, do you have any comments for Attorney Smith or Merrick?
I have no questions at this time.
Mike Zowski, any comments or questions?
One question that I have is by increasing this setback. Is that going to also affect the existing properties that are currently zoned? M F T D and will in in theory cut down on the potential development scales of those existing properties.
Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it would only apply to this type of development under the subsection, which would be within a rural area.
That that's correct, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, so there would not.
It wouldn't make any changes to the existing regulations for any other application.
Existing. Approved approval, right? Right, Merrick? Yes.
Frank, do you have any comments? Comments or concerns at this time?
Well, first of all, I like to. Say that Merrick did a hell of a job. He he specifically asked, answered the question that I asked to my satisfaction. I think his family is concerned about the residents and the property owners adjacent to this property. And I think you did a good job and I have no questions at this time.
Thank you.
Ian, comments, concerns?
Just a question because the language is something. Not in my familiarity because I'm not a road person at all. The concept of a collector and arterial roadway, are those commonly understood terms or defined in our regulations?
I believe that they're defined for the record, Chris Smith, in your plan of conservation and development. That's typically where you find them and. And Merrick, I'll let you comment on whether they're actually in the regulations or not. I don't know the answer to that. But they they typically when one drafts a regulation like this, that those definitions, the roads are defined that way in the P O C D.
And while he's looking, do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make sure that that what if this was approved, that that was understandable to anybody who read it in the future. Because it was very clear when Merrick explained it, but I would not have known what those words meant.
Yeah, I I. Merrick, for the record, I do not believe they are actually in the zoning regulations. They are defined within the highway design manual of the state of Connecticut. But as far as within his zoning regulations, I don't think they are defined that way. So I believe Chris is correct. It is in within the P O C D is where it would be outlined. But it is commonly understood subdivisions are local streets. They're not collectors or arterial.
I was just asking for the sake of the future and I guess I'll leave the question with town staff. On if they feel it needs to be defined or doesn't. It may be so clear to everybody else. It's unimportant. Thank you.
I would like to hear from town staff and what they think about this. Well, Frank, you just read my mind because they were next. Either Clark or Mike Damato, and any comments at this point regarding the proposed text amendment? That we haven't already heard or any any points of view from staff?
I'll defer to Mike. He's the one who prepared the original memo from the last application. As well as this one, but my understanding of the definitions of arterial and collector matches what Merrick has said.
Yeah, so we don't define them in the subdivision regs. We don't define them in the P O C D, but. They are widely understood and and basically the state. Has that definition in the highway design manual, which is what Merrick referenced and it's a universal. It's a universal set of terminology because obviously roads cross multiple towns. So you wouldn't want sort of 169 different versions of what was what. So I don't, I think to answer your question, I don't think it will be an issue down the road to determine whether something is a collector road or an arterial road. We could certainly lean on our town engineer for that as well, if there was any question.
I also have the definition right here from the highway manual. It states that all public roads and streets not classified as arterials or collectors will have a local classification. So basically anything that's not a collector or arterial is considered local.
Okay, Joe, it's your turn. You know all about this.
Okay, um. So this is a we're open up the public hearing. We're going to try to keep this orderly. So. If you want to speak, you just try to, I think there's a function, raise your hand and I'm going to scroll. I am two screens. So there are 41 people that potentially would like to talk. So. I see Elizabeth Bragg is the first person I see. So so go right ahead and kindly everyone just introduce for the record and your address. Thank you.
Yes, Quentin Bragg and Elizabeth Bragg at seventeen Eastwood Drive. It was Commissioner Gobin that asked the question to Mike Damato of all properties with and without sewer. That could also fall into this category. So I guess the question is going to be going to Mike Damato because the paperwork that I saw was 56 properties that could fall into this.
M F D D.
For the M F D D. So the question we go back to Mike Damato is to clarification of where these properties could be, I guess, in a residential area.
Mike, do you need some time to research that and get back to the Braggs?
No, so what he's referencing to to sort of bring, I guess, everybody onto the same page. The previous application, there was a question from Commissioner Gobin about the parcels and trying to understand the total. The the potential that that application, how it would apply to all the parcels in residential zones. We don't have access to the G I S data to be able to do a G I S analysis, but what I did. And then didn't didn't ultimately bring to the commission because the application was withdrawn. But what I did was I basically did a sort and filter. Of the town's grand list in Microsoft Excel and I used parcel size in the residential. Qualifiers that the assessors office has to just try to show what it would look like. But. And I so anyways, we had a conversation via email, Mr. Bragg and I, and I provided that to him a couple of weeks ago. And I can certainly share that with the commission. The caveat to that is that it doesn't show. Really what we're dealing with because you could have a 35 acre parcel that has a house on it that may be considered to be ineligible because it's already developed. And someone could buy that and knock a house down and want to do something else with it. Just like you could have two or three parcels that are contiguous that are total 30 acres or more and someone could buy those and combine them. So. It's a snapshot of what we might be looking at, but. It's not, it's not a be all end all. It's so it's a it's just a component. It doesn't answer the total question. The one thing that I couldn't really do is definitively. Include all of the sewer service stuff because that comes from the G I S. So I I can. Certainly provide that if the commission is interested in looking at it, just know that it's not a complete analysis.
You have a follow up question, sir?
Yes, Mike, you you went back to the city sewer. Commissioner Gobin said with or without ski water and sewer, she said a contractor could put that on. If you wanted, I could play it back for you. I have it on my phone for actual comment. What she said with or without city sewer. Because just like Mr. Kemmy is going to be putting in city sewer.
Okay, so I'm not sure if there's a question there. That's all part of a previous application. So I I didn't include everything there because this is a totally new record. And there's language here that's different than what was proposed at the last application. I and Merrick can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that there's some text that's different. As far as the sewer, I I think that was tweaked. I don't have it in front of me. But again, I don't have without G I S, I don't have access to data that tells me all the parcels in town that have access to sewer right now. So I couldn't. I couldn't filter those out and drill down with all the other data. I just I can't do that analysis in house. Which is why, which is why I couldn't get that list drilled down. Further from the residential stuff. I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm doing my best.
And and that's why I kind of went one step further by doing that overlay. So you can see what the town sewer service area is like over the residential rural areas. There's a limited amount of properties. And there's only that with the small area that's within the R three zone. It's pretty self evident of what can and cannot happen. Someone can just put a sewer in if it's not within a sewer service area. It doesn't work that way.
You're putting one in.
Because we are within a sewer service area.
And it was 56 properties in Mike Damato's. Email. I'm sure at least half of those must be somewhere near a city sewer that you could also tap in. A contractor has the ability as you do, correct?
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Chris Smith?
Go ahead.
I mean, I I hear this quite a bit when you're dealing with text amendments. And again, the zone change discretion to the commission. Is what controls where anybody can apply the M F T D just as it it controls any. Other zone in your regulations and whether somebody can rezone their property in the middle of a residential zone to a business or commercial zone. That all depend and it may qualify for the application. But it's up to the commission within your discretion. To determine whether you're going to approve that request for change of zone. So whether this. Whether the M F T D with all these limitations that Merrick has built in for this particular use that would be permitted in the M F T D. Would apply to 100 properties, which clearly it doesn't. In the town of East Windsor, the commission still has the discretion in a zone. It still is subject to somebody coming in with a zone change request. And it and it's really honestly, it's it's just an analogy would be no different than everybody who goes home to their single family home in a residential zone in the town. Being subjected to their neighbor coming in with an application to rezone to a business or a commercial. To put in a barber or salon shop, the commission would have discretion to say no, it's not appropriate for that site. So it's it's I just just want to point out to the commission, it's a zone text amendment. And it's it's just not really relevant to the zone text amendment. This this whole line of of review, to be honest with you, this this question. And because again, and that's why I mentioned it at the beginning. There was a lot of confusion last go around. The ultimate protection for anybody in this town is the commission has the ability to say no to a request for change of zone, whether it's residential to business. Or it's a property that qualifies under these provisions, this limited use. And the limited area of town under the M F T D regulations, the commission still has discretion with the zone change to say no. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you. Someone else? I'm scanning. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Commission.
Yes, go right ahead, please.
Yes, Chris Mickey, 22 Sullivan Farm Road. I guess I have a question right at the moment here in reading the proposed text amendment. I don't see any, if the text amendment was approved, there wouldn't be a need for the zone change that Attorney Smith was talking about. Am I wrong in that? It says that if they pass, if you, excuse me, granted this favor to S J K properties. They would have the ability to now pursue multi family housing or this call it a co op as Merrick called it. In on that subject property without it necessarily a zone change. The way the P O C D is currently written, M F D D properties are only allowed in the village areas. And not out here on the Ellington line. And I guess what I'm in terms of the zone change, if you did indeed grant that or not the zone change, the text amendment change. If you indeed granted that, it would now be allowed in a rural area, providing that those caveats were meant or were made, the ones that Merrick's identified. You know, the single family, the 100 foot setback, et cetera. So there I think it's kind of misleading to say that there'd be a requirement for a zone change.
Attorney Smith, go right ahead.
I I guess that's directed to me in part, but no, a zone change would be required. The property would have to be rezoned. To the M F T D and then would be subject to a particular use would be subject to, I believe it's special permit way that it's drafted currently. So it would have to be rezoned to M F T D. And I would like to point out to the commissioner who asked me who asked about the arterial and the collector roads. I just scrolled through. Your P O C D and as Mr. Damato indicates, those terms are not defined. Usually there's very often there's a map with 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 all the roads. Those are actually actually outlined on a like a map that's in your P O C D. But I don't see that as Mr. Damato indicated.
But I don't see that as Mr. D'Amato indicated, wouldn't, it's not there. So I just did look at that. And if you had any concerns and you were to look favorably upon the text amendment. Uh, we certainly would have no objection to you incorporating, uh, the definitions that are provided in the document of state. That Merrick referred to, very similar to you incorporating very often, you know, guidelines, the two thousand and four storm order guidelines from DEP and whatnot. You see occasionally in regulations throughout the state. But there would be no objection to those definitions being incorporated if, uh, for clarification. Thank you.
So I guess in follow-up then, if, uh, if we're talking about the text amendment and such, you know, that's really changing the P O C D. Um, you know, which was a community-defined, uh, document. I don't know, i- i- maybe I'm wrong. I'm obviously not in the, uh, zoning, uh, business all that often. But, um, it would seem to me that this would be a big, a much larger community conversation. As opposed to rewriting the rules to benefit a subject property. You know, and I, I'm pointing that to the commissioner.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to respond?
Sure.
Uh, Chris Smith, for the record, as the commission is well aware, a plan of conservation and development. It's very well established in Connecticut as a guiding document for, uh, the various commissions, your planning commission. Uh, when, when you have your planning hat on, ruling on planning issues, uh, for the town improvements under eight twenty-four and whatnot. Uh, with referrals, if there's going to be town roads and, and expansions and, uh, infrastructure improvements. And also for the zoning commission when adopting a zone text amendments. The P O C D, again, it's, it's, it's an advisory document that's supposed to be updated every ten years. Um, and, uh, many towns until recently, when the state adopted regulations or state statutes where you have to, uh, do it. Uh, didn't even do that. So clearly it's an advisory document. It's a, it's a nice, it's a very well-done document, uh, that I'm sure there was a lot of effort to, uh, to come up with. But it is a, an advisory document that's flexible and it doesn't control zoning. Otherwise there wouldn't be any need for the zoning commission to consider zone text amendments. They would just automatically be in your P O C D, which of course they're not. So just for the public, it's, that's the, again, I'm looking at your P O C D on my screen here. It's an advisory document for the commission. It doesn't control, no different than getting a referral back, a report from CROG. On a text amendment or a zone change application and, and their input is advisory to the commission. You ultimately have the discretion, your legal discretion to act upon a text amendment and/or zone change. Thank you. But, but they, but the citizen raises a good point about the effort from the public to generate your P O C D. No doubt about that and the commission's efforts. Thank you.
Uh, Marie's phone, I see the hand is raised. Go right ahead.
Yes, Marie, this is a ten Rice Road, Broadbrook. I just have two quick questions and I'm not sure who to direct them to, so feel free to jump in. Um, you indicated that there's going to be an HOA, single-family detached, um, units. But you didn't comment how many units they're going to be in that area. So I was curious about that. And the other thing, because the collector street in the arterial street, um, is kind of confusing to me. So, um, I know depot street and east road, so what would be your entrance way and your exit way on? Once that development, if it gets done, which way is that going to be?
Merrick, we're Attorney Smith, one A.
Well, just for the record, obviously a specific site development proposal is, is not in front of the commission. I don't know if, uh, if Merrick has any response, but, um, but obviously just like with the last go-around. Uh, we don't have a site-specific proposal before, uh, the commission this evening.
I, I, I will add that. I mean, everybody knows the property, so the access would be off of Depot Street. The intent of the regulation number four there, you know, labeling it as, uh, collector or arterial was, was just to, um. Solidify that, that no secondary traffic would be going through a residential subdivision. Um, that, that's just, we're trying to put language in there to, to protect everyone and, uh, try to simplify it as best as we could. But I wanted to put some teeth in it to protect everyone out there. Thank you.
Well, for people, it would have been just easy to say that their road is going to be on the depot roadside and not the other side. But that's just me. But thank you for that clarification.
Someone else, member of the public, wish to offer some comments or questions?
Paul Anderson.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, it's Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Uh, I have two things. One, I want to address the sewer item. Only because people are confused and I'm chairman of the W B C A. The sewer, uh, access to this particular property that's. Everybody's thinking about, even though this is a text amendment, is a pencil line sewer connection. That will only service that property and no other property. And that was approved by D E E P. So that's all it's good for. Nobody can connect to it. It only allows that property to get a connection to our sewer system. That was done years ago and it still stands. Uh, going back to myself as an individual, uh, the plan of conservation and development. Is our guideline on how we expect our town to function. And it is not just a casual advisory document. The entire town, at a town meeting, approved this document. And this is, should be our primary guide in making decisions. Now, obviously there's other discretion. But I'd like to quote page thirty-three. In order to better guide multifamily development in accordance with the desired overall character. And structure of the community, the P O C D recommends the following strategies. I'm only going to quote one. Number one. An application to establish a multifamily development district should not be approved. Unless the site is located with an area, in an area that identifies as a village area or a non-rural area. Uh, on page thirty-four. You can see from the map there that this particular property is in a rural area. So this becomes an important distinction. This is what the town wants for their town. So I, I think this has got to be a, a major consideration for the planning and zoning commission and how things get applied. I heard statements of other MFDDs being in rural areas. The fact that decisions were made in the past, which don't comply with the P O C D. Doesn't mean we make those decisions in the future. This is a primary consideration to me. So I'm not saying that this text amendment shouldn't happen. Except I am very much against putting MFDDs in rural areas. So until the area is changed to something else, which I believe would require a vote of the town. Then I don't see how this could apply properly here. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. There was someone else who was trying to jump in here. Uh, George, go right ahead, please. If you're talking, you're on mute.
Okay, and my dog is trying to help. Uh, it's clear that the end goal here.
Sir, can you just identify yourself and, and your address?
H B I C K, seventy Eastwood Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, it's clear that the end goal here is, uh, increased density development on a property, uh, at the end of Sullivan Farm Road. Not a whole lot different from the previous application. And I ask that the commission consider, uh, the citizens input, uh, for the previous applications. As also applicable to this one, including the petition that was signed by many of our neighbors.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Someone else?
Uh, Joe, I have a quick question. Merrick, uh, could you reiterate or, or again, tell us that there will be no roads going through the development? That's presently there, or are there going to be roads connecting to your, or to whatever development goes there, not necessarily yours?
Well, a- as I stated, the, the road, um, is going to follow the existing, um, road pattern that was previously approved back in two thousand and six. Of the quarry metal subdivision. That road layout can't change because the infrastructure is in place. So the, doesn't make sense to change the layout within that development. Uh, the main access for that development was off of Depot Street, which will maintain them, which will remain the main entrance. And there would be no secondary, um, access to the point except for emergency purposes, which is by code.
Uh, another question.
And it'll be debated.
If in fact that same quarry development comes before us again. It w- it would not go through Sullivan Farms.
It would not go through Sullivan Farms.
I, I think that's a confusion that many of us, not myself, but I think many of the public are, they're concerned about.
Right, and, and that was the, the reason why we included that, because I was trying to eliminate the traffic impact and the concerns out there. I kept, you know, repeatedly going over that and then unfortunately it didn't seem like it was sinking in. So that's why I put that language in there to protect them. And, you know, um.
That's why your lawyer put that language in.
No, I, I wrote this language myself, actually.
Actually, I'll give Merrick all the credit on it, yes.
I worked hard on this. I went through the regulations and tried to make this work for everybody. Now, one of the other things that was just brought up was, you know, um, I believe was, um, um, Mr. Diego or, or I don't know if it was Mr. Anderson or not. But he mentioned, you know, the MFDD being in a rural area. Once again, the MFDD is misleading. We are not doing multi-structure, multifamily structures out there. We are doing single-family homes under a homeowners association. The field out there will still be rural. It, it, nothing's going to change. It's just unfortunately it's classified under this, this MFDD stature. That's why everyone thinks it's multifamily when in fact it's going to be single-family houses with a rural feel out there. Nothing's changing. It's just unfortunately, we can't do an HOA without being in the MFDD zone. That's how it's written.
Okay, someone else that hasn't spoken before, comment on the proposed text amendment. Um, I, I, the Braggs, I'm going to wait for someone else and I'll come back to you. Anybody else wish to speak? I'm scanning here, so if I don't catch you, uh, George, I'm going to have to wait. Um, you'll get a chance again. Anyone else who hasn't already spoke, have an opportunity? Marcy?
Um, I just had a quick question. I'm just kind of trying to follow this. But are you saying that there aren't going to be more, that the MFDD structure being changed? Doesn't mean there's going to be more than the forty-six houses that you originally planted? Or are you planning on putting more homes there?
Chris, I answered that. It's, it's site-specific, so I'm not sure. I, the, the bottom line is, yeah, it's going to be an increase in, in the density as far as the forty-eight lots, yes. But it's not going to be the hundred and fifty-six that we originally, um, you know, uh, proposed. That was just a snapshot, just a thought process. It, it didn't mean to get the reaction that it did. It was just a starting point. And obviously we scaled that back. Our intent is not to, to do that. We wanted to develop the property, um, but not to that extreme, so.
For the record, Chris Smith, that, that was, uh, with the, uh, the prior text amendment did provide for a density increase. That would have permitted, uh, that particular site development, conceptual one that, uh, had been provided. Uh, to the commission as a, as an example, as a conceptual example.
Yeah, my concern was just more not whether or not, you know, there's forty-six new homes down at the end of Sullivan Farm Road. I appreciate Mark and everything that he's doing, try, to try to accommodate people. My concern is more having a double that number down there, increasing, you know, just the traffic around here. And the feel of East Windsor and this area. So my concern is changing that text amendment is going to open a can of worms that can't be unopened, I guess, for what it's worth.
Well, again, it, uh, for the record, Chris Smith, that would all, those types of issues, potential impacts would be considered with a site-specific proposal. And that would have to, you know, you know, you have to do a zone change and then a, a special permit application where those specific concerns. Uh, would be addressed depending upon the proposal, the exact proposal that's ultimately submitted.
So if you change the text amendment here, it doesn't mean that you're just going to push for whatever you want to do. It's going to be still able to be, you know, valued by everybody?
You still, um, uh, to answer your question, uh, yes, ma'am, uh, Chris Smith, for the record. There would still be required a zone change in a special permit, correct? The special permit, Merrick?
Correct.
And both of those require public hearings.
Yeah. Furthermore, you know, part of that special permit, um, we also have to do a traffic study that is required by the regulations. So that traffic study is going to tell us whether we can or cannot do this development and how many units we can or cannot have. It, it's, it's based on the traffic study. Um, and we all know Depot Street, there's not a lot of traffic there now, but it's not. It, it's, it's still got to go through the traffic study. And then that's, you know, something that we all don't have an answer to because we don't know what that is. We don't know what that number is.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing, Mark. It's just questions that obviously I have and probably everybody else too. I just, I just want to open a big can of worms and then not be able to change that.
No, but I also want to throw in one more thing that was kind of brought up at the last meeting, which, uh, at the last application, which is, is kind of important for the public to understand. Is that if, if this type of development doesn't go forward, um, this, this development actually prevents these, the secondary access. From going through that neighborhood. If we just went with a regular scale subdivision, going back to the forty-eight lots. By the regulations, I have to have that secondary access through that development. So you are going to have an impact in your neighborhood.
Which I'm fine with forty-eight more houses if that is needed to do. I respect that and that's your property. You should be able to do something. I just am concerned about the whole MFDD part of it.
And I get it. And like I said, the MFDD is just misleading. We are doing houses. We're not.
Okay.
We're not doing monstrosities out there.
Thank you. Appreciate your answering my questions.
Thank you, Marcy. Someone else we haven't heard from before, before we go back and, and circle back for others to have another opportunity to speak. Just please speak up if, if you have, if I, we haven't already called on you. I'm scanning, looking for people who. I'm, I'm not seeing anything. So the Braggs, go right ahead. You, you initially, you wanted to speak again, go right ahead.
I have a real quick question. So if the MFDD gets approved and Merrick decides not to go through with his project. Does that not open it up to someone else, that MFDD that can come right in and do whatever they want with that piece of property?
Uh, I'll take that one. Um, no, whoever owns that has to follow that regulation. That's why I put that, those safeguards in the text language. So let's, let's. Let's say I sell the property to some developer. That developer has to put in single-family houses that are all detached. They have them use, they cannot use a secondary access going in through, uh, Sullivan Farm Road. It has to be within a sewer service area. And, and they have to have a, uh, setback of a hundred feet in their regulation. Whoever owns it has to follow that regulation.
Can I, can I respond to Mrs. Bragg to, just to, uh, the, the way that the text amendment is, uh, written, Mrs. Bragg? For the record, Chris Smith, is that, uh, this use, single-family detached would only apply to a property. That's rezoned to an MFDD that's located in the rural area. And I know that, oh, I'm sorry. So there, there wouldn't be any other, this would be pretty much the property. Uh, that would be subject to that, in addition to the cemetery and a couple of other ones, I believe that Merrick has pointed out. So, uh, if this were in, in the rezone, it's not their change of zone, it's not in front of the commission. But let's assume that it was with this text amendment. And it were to be approved, the only use that could be made of the property in the, in the MFDD zone. Would be what's provided in the zone text amendment. So it would be limited to single-family detached. With the hundred-foot setbacks. And so that, that's how this is drafted. It's not all the uses in the MFDD would now be allowed for this property, for example, that we're talking about, the kind of property. If it were to be rezoned. But again, the rezone is not in front of the commission. But even if it were, to answer your question, no, it would not open up the door to all the, all the uses in the MFDD zone. It would be limited to the single-family detached. And that's why Merrick, uh, crafted it that way. Uh, so that would afford protection to, uh, to you and the commission if it were to be rezoned. And, and again, that's not even in front of the commission this evening.
Okay, so, so going forward, if Merrick chose to sell that property, you're saying that that MFDD would have to follow the next owner?
Oh, well, no, it, once you, if any, any, uh, any zoning approval, it runs with the property. Doesn't run with the identity of the user. So if somebody were to buy it, they would be limited to. If it were to be approved, the zone change, and that would be the only use. if it were to be approved, the zone change, and that would be the only use that they could make of it. They'd have to comply with this regulation as drafted, yes.
So going forward, if another piece of property came up in front of the commission for an MFDD, then they can tweak it basically the way they want. Am I getting that right? That they can change it to the way they want, it suits them, on an MFDD?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done. Sorry.
No, I'm done.
No, I didn't mean, yeah, I didn't want to interrupt. I thought you were, I thought you were done. Um, I'm not sure I really understand the question, but if if the, if this property were to be rezoned, uh, it could only be utilized for that use. If somebody wanted to expand it to something else, they would have to come in for a text amendment uh, to do that. So if somebody bought the property uh, from the existing owner for this particular property that we're talking about, even though it's not in front of the commission, but but uh, to respond to your question, they would have to come back to the commission and ask to put in multifamily, because this would not permit multifamily in a property that's in the rural's uh, area, is in the P O C D, as Mr. Anderson pointed out, your chair, your W P C A. So those are restrictive and limiting factors uh, that are built into this for that reason. Hopefully address these concerns. I'm sorry.
Any property owner has the ability to make a text amendment to do for whatever. I mean, anybody can propose that. In theory, you have a residential, um, you have a residential zone, a residential property. If someone wanted to propose a text amendment to do something differently, they have that right. Doesn't mean it's gonna be approved. That's a right. Anybody can propose a text amendment. At any property in East Windsor. Okay, um, George, yes, go right ahead, sir. George, you're probably on mute again.
There we go. Uh. The emergency access of Sullivan Farm Road, how will that be controlled to allow emergency police, fire, ambulance uh, access? Uh, but prevent residents on either side from using it? It'll be gated, locked? Will the police and other emergency services have keys? How does that work?
Uh, to Chris Smith, for the record, I think to respond to your question, we would need a site-specific proposal, which is not in front of the commission this evening. But uh, when in, if and when that were to occur, that would be a a good question, and uh, that would probably be built into the plan uh, if there were going to be any type of secondary emergency access, I would, I would presume. But again, that's not, that hasn't been, that hasn't been formulated in any final plan.
Well, how is it done in your experience at other?
Well, I, so the the intent, the intent was hypothetically, if that development was to happen, it would be very similar to the mansions where it would be gated. And I believe um, the the keys are with the police department, fire department and all that. So it would be very similar to how what the mansions are on Route one forty. They have a separate entrance that is gated, so it would be gated. That's the intent.
And they have a physical key or a key code or a key card?
I have no idea. That that's something down the road. I've never, no idea.
Whatever the fire safety folks wanted.
Okay.
Okay, someone else we haven't heard from before. Please speak up, because I'm I'm scanning. There's forty-two people on the call here. I am not seeing anybody. Okay, I'm gonna circle back with the commission.
Well, uh, excuse me, Chairman. Um, I was just waiting for somebody new to come in. This is once again, Chris Mickey, uh, twenty-two Sullivan Farm Road. Um, I guess my my only uh, ending comment, if you will, before this all kind of wraps up for the evening is um, as as Attorney Smith has has mentioned numerous times, there's no site-specific plan in front of the commission or or at at a proposal at this point, but this is the first step. So I guess what I'm going to ask of the commission is, do you value the the uh, the language that's in the current P O C D? As Mr. Anderson pointed out, um, you know, because if we grant this first step, you know, now there, obviously, what comes next, step two is the zone change. What comes next after that would be uh, uh, you know, any special per- use permits. Um, all of which you have the opportunity to uh, to approve or decline. But I mean, if we value what we wrote, if we value the documents that we put in forth to guide us in our, in our decision-making, um, then I would say you stop at step one here and and we leave it as it is. You know, um, I have no problem, as Marcy pointed out, uh, of having forty-seven uh, single-family homes on single-family lots out there. Um, I get concerned when we open the 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 door, so to speak, into put doing something else, something more cooperative um, without having any site-specific plans. And I understand that uh, um, that that becomes step two, actually, that would become step three. But you do open that, the open that door, so um, obviously, you folks have a uh, a little bit of a decision to make. Um, some pondering to do, and I hope you make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask Chris a question? Chris, do you have enough confidence and faith in the commissioners for us to make the right decisions? I I kind of get the feeling that you're not so sure that we're gonna do the right thing. Is, am I wrong?
Um, Frank, I, you and I have, I've known you for an awfully long time. Uh, I'm, I'm just skeptical of a lot of things. I mean, uh, uh, many times I've, I've, and it's not of the commission in general, um, or in particular, I should say, it's um. I've been unpleasantly surprised uh, uh, numerous times, you know, so I I do become a little more skeptical. Um, and that's why I'm pleading my case.
My last comment is there's, there's openings for alternates, Chris.
And and Frank, I I I appreciate that, and um, I actually, I think somebody may made mention of that to me once before. Uh, I've done, uh, oh, gosh, nine years as chairman of the Board of Ed. Um, I I like sitting on the sidelines a little more often these days, just offering comment when I can.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment?
Right ahead, Merrick.
Uh, so the the driver for this, this type of development is that um, we wanted to do an HOA kind of feel. So people don't wanna shovel their driveways anymore. They don't wanna mow their lawns. Um, this, this is why we're here tonight, to move it forward in that type of a a change. Um, this development, let's say it was a subdivision. This development is no different than a subdivision, except for who's gonna maintain it? Who is gonna do the snowplowing? Who's gonna be doing the uh, the lawn care? That's the only difference. It's it, those lots are imaginary. You're not gonna see any difference out there. You're gonna see houses. It's, there's really no change as as far as that's concerned. And the only difference, you know, with a residential subdivision, as previously approved versus what we're doing, is we are actually shifting the access from not going through Sullivan Farm Road. So there is a benefit to the community on that end of it.
Merrick, I think the question is the text amendment, and we're kind of drifting away from that. I mean, let's, let's get on with the text amendment. We think it's the right thing to do, and everything is, everything we're kind of talking about is in the future. Who knows? God forbid, something might happen and you don't wanna develop it.
Right, but but what I was getting is why we're asking for a text amendment. That's, that was the main goal of of why we're here tonight, to get that text amendment for that type of a development. That's all I was trying to get to it.
And I I understand that completely.
Commissioner Kozowski, did you, you had your hand uh, half raised?
Yes, please. I I I think the underlying issue we're all facing here has to deal with density and traffic. So based on what I quickly looked at, if we start looking at residential developments being allowed to add MFDD uh, in an R two zone, it would increase the density by threefold. In an R three zone, it would increase the allowable density four times the uh, allowable place. This would now put the burden of a, of proof on the traffic study, and I think that's where everybody is really um, leery about changing zoning because of the densities. So if if it's in the, to this text amendment, if it included something to the effect of that the underlying zones density would have to remain the same, I think that would alleviate a lot of people's concerns about overcrowding, over-traffic, and over-development.
Anyone else? Please speak up.
Um, it's Ann. Could I ask a question?
Already had in.
In the April eighth staff memo to the commission from Michael Damato, he noted that staff previously suggested an additional criteria that includes some form of community amenity or open space. I'm wondering what the applicants feel is on um adding a criteria with respect to open space. I understand people reach a point where they don't wanna take care of their yards, and having a community association do it for them has real benefits, but a lot of times when I think of these planned communities, there is also some amen- amenity. Um, and I'm wondering why that is not in the proposed language.
Well, I can take that real quick. Um, I believe that is already in the regulations themselves. Section eight oh two point one six covers the open space requirements. So as part of the MFDD uh, development, you are required to have open space amenities. It's it's spelled out what is required, what is needed, um. What type of open space you need, how much areas. So it's already spelled out, the open space is a requirement of that regulation. So that's why it was not um, added to that language. Um, I do wanna also address um, Mr. Kowalski's uh, comment. If you remember back in October, when I first presented this concept, the concept was to uh, increase the density due to economic um uh, constructability of the development itself. So to go in as the forty-eight lots, it was not conceivable with the construction costs these days, the expensive getting that sewer pump station, um, having spare parts for that sewer station, the expenses do not um, add up to to anything. So that's why we presented this back in October, to increase the density. Now, unfortunately, we we did increase it four, fourfold, four times. Um, it was just a talking point, and then we just scaled that back. But in the end, um, you know, if we had to go with the underlying zone, there would be no different, there would be no reason though to go for this text amendment.
Well, that's kind of where I brought, you brought up the point of wanting to be, you you'd have to do this to be able to make the community type out of it. But the local community is concerned about density. So that's where I, I kind of think the the sticking point is how much density we allow in the residential area to, number one, make it, you know, economically viable for you, but it also to satisfy the concerns of the community and and the increased uh, traffic by, you know, having, you know, because now, I'm not thinking about your spot specifically. We're talking text amendment. So now anybody can take a piece of property and increase the density fourfold by applying for this uh, un- under this new text amendment.
If I can respond to that.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, sir, I thought you were done. And and again, uh, it, any property that um, before anybody could apply for a site development proposal, they would have to have a zone change. And then more importantly, for the specific site development proposal, there would be subject to a special permit. And traffic and impact on adjacent properties would all be uh, legitimate. Providing your criteria for special permit review and approval would be legitimate issues for the commission to address, no different than if a pharmacy is permitted in a particular zone, and one is proposed in a residential neighborhood, but it is permitted under the zoning regulations, subject to special permit review and approval. Uh, the commission could, within your discretion, under the special permit review, say, wait a minute, we've looked at the traffic and all these other issues that you can legitimately consider, and we don't think this is an appropriate use for this site, because a special permit, as we all know, is a use permit. Just as if there were to be a site-specific proposal, uh, you you are correct, it would be a special permit, and it would be subject to a public hearing. And the commission would have to be convinced that your criteria for special permit approval is is met, and if it's not, then you certainly have a right to deny the application. It's not being an appropriate use for that particular property, whether it's a chemic property or it's any other property in the town. Uh, you would have that ability. Again, and an example might be a pharmacy at a particular use where the commission says, you know, what are you thinking? This is not appropriate for this property here. It might be permitted, subject to special permit review, but we're not gonna approve it because it's not a good, it's not a good use for this property in this, in this area. So that special permit gives you a, that discretion gives you a lot of, you know, authority to say no to somebody if you think it's inappropriate.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I agree a hundred percent with uh, Attorney Smith. I understand that. The commission members understand it, but I'm not so sure that the public understands that, or they wanna believe it. But it is, it is a fact. Uh, we we, if you have confidence in in our ability to make decisions, it it's 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 gonna be that way.
Are there any new comments from the public, something we haven't already heard tonight? Please feel free to speak up. So, um. Attorney Smith, si- since there are no additional um, members of the community that wish to speak at this point, do you wanna have any final finding, closing remarks before we consider closing the public hearing tonight?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I I think that um, I thank you for entertaining my comments and and thoughts on this and and for your time. I don't think we have any objection to the public hearing being closed that, uh, I, but I, however, I would turn the floor over uh, to uh, to Merrick for his closing comments, but thank you very much, and and everyone stay safe. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just thank you for listening to to um, you know, what we had to say. I I do believe that I did put some teeth into this new revision to the uh, text amendment, to address the public's concerns, to address this commission's concerns. Um, I mean, most of you know me. Um, you know, we've been transparent all the way with this entire project. We're not trying to pull a fast one. We're trying to do everything right and trying to make everybody happy. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So members of the commission, um. Are we ready to close the public hearing tonight?
I'm ready to close the public hearing.
Me too.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interrupt, I just wanna get in while the public uh, hearing is open that um, for those who didn't perhaps review the packet, um, and members of the public, we did receive, the commission did receive two um, submissions prior to the public hearing. One was from the town of Arlington, and another was from um, Mr. Paul Robert. Those were provided in your packets. I just want everyone to know, um, for the record, they were provided and included.
Thank you. So with that, will someone offer a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing on application P Z twenty twenty-one dash six for a text amendment application. Section eight oh two, multi-family development district. The applicant is S J K Properties LLC.
There's a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Here are none. I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
See five hands, so the public hearing is closed. Um. I do not, I do not see a, a draft motion for approval or denial of the text amendment. Um, personally, I I've heard a lot of testimony from the applicant, as well as concerned citizens of the community. And I would like to personally, I'd like to kind of sit back and dwell on it and um, and and think about it. We're not obligated to vote on this tonight at all. That's just my opinion. How, what, how does everyone else feel about um about considering the next step of actually um, consider approving or denying the text amendment?
Uh, Joe, I'll chime in on that. I'm I'm. I'm, I'm ready to approve or disapprove tonight, but of course we can't because we don't have anything written. I don't think. I don't need much more time to make a decision as soon as possible. It's fine with me.
Any other opinions from the commission members?
I would like to see a formal draft.
Okay.
Agreed. It's too important enough to.
Okay, so with that, there's no further action tonight. We'll consider either taking action, the proposed text amendment at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peg, do you need a break or can I continue with our regular scheduled agenda?
I'm fine, Joe. Just keep going.
Okay. Next up on the new public hearings, PZ dash twenty twenty one dash ten, South Prospect Hill Road LLC text amendment application to the East Windsor zoning regulations, section five oh two permitted uses in business and industrial districts and section five oh four dot two A prohibitive uses. Good evening, Jay. I think I see you light up there. You must be, you must be on.
I am the guy tonight. Good evening, for the record, J Ursery, J R Russo and Associates here representing the applicant, South Prospect Hill Road LLC. Eric Spungen, who is a member of the LLC is also here with me this evening. This is an application for a text amendment involving your highway interchange zone. And my partner, Tim Kuhn, I think had been before you and formally and discussed this with you, I think twice actually, at two different occasions. And he has also had lengthy discussions with your staff, with Clark Chapin and Mike D'Amato, and came up with, I guess, what we believe is hopefully something that'll, that'll give the commission a comfort level to approve this, which really just adds in the allowable. Drive through use within the zone, which was once there and was removed. So the application actually involves your use table in section five oh two and pertains only to the highway interchange zone, which, as you commissioners all know, essentially involves an area of Route five from just south of exit forty four on ninety one going northerly up just past exit forty five and covers that area of town, which essentially are the two interchanges from the highway to, to one forty and to Route five and South Main Street. So in this amendment, and, and I could share the screen, although I think you probably all have the submission materials. The letter that Tim submitted along with the application, which was dated March twelfth, has a shot of the use table. And in this particular case, we're talking about other uses in the highway interchange zone. And we're simply under the drive through designation and other uses. We're adding in under the H I Z and allowable use by special use permit, which was once there. And you can see it's highlighted in red in the, in the letter that you have there, which would again allow this particular use within this zone. Now that said, there is a stipulation added, and if you see underneath that, there's a footnote or a note to go to number fourteen, which if we flip the page over on this particular memo. Number fourteen adds some clarification as to what would be allowed in terms of a drive through use. And what it says is, and I'm just going to read it to you, is drive-throughs in the highway interchange zone shall be limited to businesses whose principal use is A, to provide banking services, B, to sell food or non-alcoholic beverages, C, to dispense prescription drugs, and D, as an automotive filling station. The following section five oh four point two A only requires to remove under prohibited uses, the drive-through under D, and then change the letter designation for the rest of the prohibited uses. So it's fairly straightforward and pretty simple. And I think you're all pretty familiar with it, having discussed it informally. And, and would allow the, you know, the owners of the LLC to further develop their property, which in this particular case is the one, I guess, we're all familiar with the Wendy's and the KFC and the Taco Bell and the, the People's Bank Building. And there's another parcel to the rear there that they're desiring to develop. And this particular developer that wants to come in and build a new building needs a drive-through. And as we all know, there's already drive-throughs there. This would add one more and would allow drive-throughs again up and down the, the highway interchange zone. And I think when you're looking at highway business, it's probably something that, that I think is a good idea to allow through the special permit process. So as I said, it's fairly simple and I'm not going to, going to dwell on it. And if anybody has any particular questions, any commissioners, I think Eric or I could probably answer them for you.
Okay, we'll query the commission members first before we go to the public. Jim, any comments or questions?
I have no questions at this time. We've been through this a few times already and all my concerns have been answered.
Okay, Matt Kozowski?
No, I'm, I'm good with the way they put the language together.
Ian, how about you?
I think they did a good job. I'm good.
Frank?
I, I think they did a great job. I'm, I'm great with it. I'm okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the members of the public on the proposed text amendment? I'm scanning the. The names here, please speak up if I, if I don't catch you. Anybody wish to speak in the proposed text amendment? I'm not seeing anybody. That might be a first. Okay, I'm going to query staff either, I'm not sure which. Who, who did this one, whether or not it was Clark or Mike D'Amato or combination thereof. Is there anything else to add to what's already been presented tonight regarding this one?
No, I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. Those, the only thing I will add is the limitations to businesses whose principal use was based on feedback I'd gotten from the commission when we discussed it informally.
One last chance, any members of the public wish to comment on the proposed text amendment? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Jay, Eric, any final thoughts before we consider closing the public hearing?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I have no final comments at this point.
Nor do I. I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I will move to close application PZ twenty twenty one dash ten for a text amendment, the section five oh two permitted uses in business and industrial districts and section five oh four two A prohibited uses. The applicant is South Prospect Road LLC.
There's a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote, all those in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
I see five hands, so the public hearing is closed. It's unanimous. I see that staff has drafted a motion for consideration. Personally, I'm prepared to, to deliberate on this one. If, if anyone else is, you can certainly consider taking this up motion for approval too.
I'm comfortable and ready to make a motion to approve if the group is amenable.
I'm ready.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I'll move to approve application PZ twenty twenty one dash ten for a text amendment application, section five oh two permitted uses in business and industrial districts and section five oh four point two A prohibited uses. This approval is granted subject to conformance with the submitted application, supporting materials and public hearing presentation. As may be modified by the commission and this approval and the following conditions slash modifications. And really the only. Condition slash modification is a finding, two findings. One, that the commission finds that drive-throughs are an appropriate other use in the H I Z under certain circumstances by special use permit. And two, the proposed amendment is not in conflict with the East Windsor Plan of Conservation and Development.
Ian, do you want to make reference to the, to the, the date of the memo?
The motion is included in a memo dated April eighth, twenty twenty one from Clark J Chapin, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you. There is a motion on the table for approval of the text amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote, all those in favor say, raise their. Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous. So the motion, the motion passes. Thank you. It looks like we'll, we'll see you folks again for a special use permit.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good evening. Bye bye.
Thank you. Take care.
Take care.
Next up, under new public hearings, item C, PZ twenty twenty one dash eleven, twenty four Rockville Road subdivision application, a two lot re-subdivision. This is in a R three zone. Is there someone here for this one tonight?
Yeah, this is Guy Hesketh. Jim, are you, are you on now?
I believe I am.
Owner. Oh, there you go. I'll let Jim Daniel, the applicant, make a presentation and then I'll talk about the technical merits of the application. Go, go for it, Jim.
Okay, well, I'm not sure if I'm being seen or not, or I'm doing this right. My name is Jim Daniel. I grew up in town there all my life, eighty five graduate high school there, live in Ellington now. And looking to build a house over by, by next to my in-laws on Rockville Road. I have a disabled son that was hurt in a motorcycle accident several years back. We're going to build a ranch to make it simpler for us to get around the house and looking forward to getting back to East Windsor. And that's about it.
Thanks, Jim. For the record, my name is Guy Hesketh. I'm a licensed professional engineer with F.A. Hesketh and Associates. Our offices are in East Grammy, Connecticut. And we have before you a couple of applications this evening. The first application that we're discussing now is the re-subdivision application. I do want to mention that subsequent to submitting the initial package, we did some investigating on the parcel and working with staff, we realized that a rare lot subdivision would not be permissible on this lot because you have a requirement for the twenty percent of the maximum lots. A rare lot apparently was carved out of this parcel a couple of years ago. So subsequent to that, we did amend our application and we submitted some revised plans to still include a two lot, a lot split for two lot subdivision, but no longer the rare lot component of that. Those revised plans were submitted to staff. They're, they're very similar to what the original application was, except for the frontage, which we have increased to now comply with the requirements for the lot in that zone. Do you have plans that you can share with us, Mike? Or is that something I need to, to do from my side?
Either or, if you want to do it, you can. I can also.
Yeah, if you don't mind putting up the, the proposed subdivision plan, the.
So Guy, I, I got a couple administrative questions before we go any further here. So. I introduced a re-subdivision application for two lot re-subdivision. Now, is there going to be a request for a special use permit application? Or because of the revision to the plans, that's not going to be required anymore for the real lot?
That is correct. The rare lot will no longer be applicable. So we would request to withdraw that application for the special permit for the rare lot.
Okay, no problem. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, so if you look at the plan that you have before you here, the, the original plan, if you notice the driveway is on the left of the, of the rare parcel, the parcel, no, if you can go to the RS one, Mike, that's. And the RS one proposal. Can you maximize the screen so I can just see the title? Yeah, there we go. Okay. So if you scroll down here, the, the lot in question is, if you look at lot number six, I believe it is, that's, that's Tom's lot that fronts on Rockville Road. And there's sort of a U-shaped parcel that goes around, a horseshoe-shaped parcel that goes around his, his, his parcel there. And what we're proposing is to divide that U-shaped parcel, the horseshoe-shaped parcel into two lots. It would be the lot on the left, which is three dash three, the proposed lot would be two point seven seven acres. And the remainder portion to the right of that would be three point two zero acres. So basically, we're taking the parcel and breaking it into two. We would provide a hundred and fifty foot frontage on Rockville Road. You'll notice there's a little strip, a twenty five foot strip on the left side of Tom's parcel. That would be, that portion would be. Would be merged into lot six so that Tom's lot actually gets a little bit larger with a little bit of reconfiguration that we're doing here. So we've got a hundred and fifty foot of frontage on Rockville Road. We meet those requirements and, and the balance of the lot, as you can see, would be a deeper lot. It would go back approximately, you know, six hundred feet or so, five hundred and fifty feet or so from Rockville Road. If you can go to the, the other site plan. Scroll down a little bit. Yeah, so. As part of the application and your subdivision regulations, we're required to show the feasibility of developing the lot. And this plan here depicts the location of the driveway, which was, which would be on the left, biased towards the left side of the lot. And the house would be located in, in the rear portion of, of the site itself. And the primary reason for that is because of, of the depth of groundwater on the site and the ability to construct a septic system. We did meet with North Central District Health District. We've conducted some test pits, the location of the septic primary and reserve area depicted on the plans in front of the house. Those are suitable soils. My understanding is that the Health District has sent an email indicating that the lot is suitable for the construction of a subsurface sewer disposal system. We do have a placeholder for a well on the property, which is located behind the house, behind the driveway. Health code requires there to be a seventy five foot separating distance between the well and adjacent or onsite septic systems. We do meet that requirement there. And the house itself, the grading is around the house. It's going to be lifted out of the ground slightly. We believe that based on the test pit data that we've done, that the basement itself would be about a foot or so above the groundwater table, the seasonal high groundwater table. However, we do show a placeholder for sump pump in the basement to provide discharge on the, on the side of the house. We do also on this plan show the sedimentation erosion control measures, which would include a construction exit at the driveway. We've got sil fence erosion control around the perimeter of the construction and the down gradient areas. Again, that's for the control of sedimentation when the construction itself is being done. We did share the plan with Len Norton, the town engineer, and he did have a couple of comments from the first round that we took care of. And my understanding is he submitted a memo on March twenty fifth indicating that his comments had been adequately addressed. And those included, because of the length of the driveway, providing for gravel, load bearing area on the side of the road for emergency vehicles and fire apparatus to make it to the house. A couple other minor comments that we took care of. Essentially, that's our proposal. We, we did notify the abutting property owners with certified mail and provided that to the town. And the applicant himself has posted the sign and my understanding is submitted the signed affidavit to town staff. So. The requirements are met. Now, there are a couple of things that were. That we're requesting um, under your subdivision regulations. Uh, the applicant himself is a is is a family member. Um, my understanding is his his wife is a daughter to Tom. And uh, your regulations do allow a uh, a waiver in. Yeah, either dedication of open space or fee in lieu of open space. We're requesting that the commission grant that for us. And then your your subdivision regs also um, have some language in there about sidewalks and the streetlights. Uh, we're we're requesting a waiver from the, from uh, the installation. Of the sidewalk and installation of streetlights and then also also a waiver for the fee in lieu of, I know in some areas. Where you have sidewalks that are close by, you require sometimes applicants, if they don't construct a sidewalk to um, provide for. Some monetary compensation to an escrow account for future construction. So we're requesting a waiver from those three things. The the dedication and or fee in lieu of open spaces, sidewalk and the streetlights. Uh, in a nutshell, I think that's it. We'd like to uh, see if you would consider an approval this evening. Um, I know the applicant is um, pretty eager to get started with construction and and take advantage of the construction season to get the house built as soon as possible. So having said that, if there's any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer them for you.
Okay, so why don't we first start with members of the commission? Uh, Frank, how about you? Questions or comments at this time?
Um, well, not really. I I think he's covered just about everything I had in the year. I I think he's covered all the bases as far as I can see, but I'll wait until here what all the other commissioners have to say, but I'm fine for now.
Okay, Mike Kozowski?
Yeah, I mean, I just usually sidewalks always come up in the discussions on any subdivisions. And uh, yeah, I'm pretty sure that there's nothing on Rockville Road anywhere near that area. I'm just trying to remember back, and usually in most cases, we still kind of accept the fee in lieu of rather than a straight waiver, but uh. I guess I I'd be should be convinced either way.
Uh, Jim, how about you?
Yeah, I'm I'm in agreement with all the waivers. Like Mike said, there's no sidewalks there. Um, probably never gonna be sidewalks there, and it's good to see a local person come back to town and build a house. Next, their brother and their parents. So I'm I'm all in favor for it.
And Anne, how about you?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, um. I got a question, got a couple of questions, one of which is is for staff. Administratively, um, is there anything different in how you how the? The um, town staff prepared. Um, notes for us regarding this re-subdivision application? Now that the special use application is not part of this for the rear lot?
I'll jump in. Uh, so I did the review, this the plan review for the revised plans this morning. So I, because you know, I I I, if you see my first staff report, I include a bunch of comments. We sent them to the the applicant, and we we sort of had a couple of days of how do we figure this out? So the revised plans came in. My guidance to them was not to withdraw prior to the meeting, because I wanted them to have the dialogue with the commission. So I went as far as I could with the revised memo to give you as much as possible. Without getting into waivers and motions, because I didn't know how the commission would feel. Um, and I tried to make it hopefully somewhat easy to follow, so that. The the request to withdraw would happen during the hearing, so that anybody that came to the meeting expecting to be heard. Would understand why the commission ultimately wasn't going to move forward if we were in agreement that the revised plan made sense. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so none, so the proposed motion. Doesn't need any additional conditions of approval?
So yeah, so the the revised plan, the revised site staff memo, uh, which I did today. Has, I've tried to reflect that. The only thing that I didn't include was stuff related to the. Um, the waivers for the sidewalks and the streetlights, because that wasn't on the first application. So you guys will have to include those um, if based on whatever direction you want to go.
Okay, and your revised memo. Was not part of the information submitted and under the uh, SharePoint, correct? That was an email?
The revised memo is in the is in the SharePoint, yep.
Which file is it?
So it should have gone to you via email, and then if you go into the application.
I'm in the application now.
There should be a folder for revised plans and memo.
Revised, is that's it's from a twenty-four Rockville Road. It's what is it entitled?
Twenty-four Rockville Road re-subdivision. That's the folder.
Yeah, I'm in it.
Yep, and then right at the top, there should be revised plans and staff memo. It's a it's a subfolder right in there.
All right, one more time. I'm under four, I'm under uh, twenty twenty-one. April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
Which folder is it?
And then you go to the Rockville Road resub.
Got it.
And then.
Revised plans and memo. Okay, thank, thank you. Sorry about that.
As long as it's there, you can take as long as you want to find it.
So the revised plans came in today?
Uh, I think they they came into the office on Friday. I think they haven't, they were done on the ninth.
Yeah, if I can clarify that, Mr. Chairman, Guy has got the record. Uh, we did send those out Friday afternoon. Um, I know the town staff and the town hall closed at one. Um, we submitted them, and I think there was a computer issue, and they might have had early Monday morning. Um, but yeah, those were a part of the record. I did speak with staff Monday about noon or so, and everybody had received them at that time.
I hand-delivered them to uh, Amanda, the revised plans also, and I they I believe they're also sent PDF. And then um, I was advised by Mike D'Amato not to withdraw this special use permit, and we would go over it tonight like he is speaking of.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the audience wish to speak on the proposed re-subdivision application? Yes, sir. Angelo Angelo, yes, go right ahead.
Angelo Severino, uh, also with me is Gene Severino. Uh, our daughter is Courtney Severino on the plot. It says Courtney Gonzalez. She's the adjacent property owner at sixteen, uh, Rockville Road. It's a relatively easy question, I think, either Guy or or Jim. Uh, and and as an aside, Courtney is very anxious, Jim, for you to build your home, bumping you back to East Windsor. The question uh, my daughter has is, uh, there's a. On her real life, rear lot, which uh, butts the the proposed plans. There's a string of trees that provide a degree of privacy. Uh, pine trees, and the question is whether those are going to be removed or do you plan on leaving them there?
I can answer that for you. This is Jim Daniel. And yeah, no, I was especially with um, it wasn't at all going to be. Um, messed with at all. I might have had to move. I might have had to cut down the couple of trees on the very left side of her property where my right away goes in, but they're out, they were on my property. But now with this, um, you know, change in the frontage, I'm going to move my driveway over just a little to accommodate. Um, you know, those trees for her privacy and for some shade somewhere along the lot, but I have no intention of cutting the trees. Um, especially the trees on her back property line to to mess with her, um, you know, privacy there. No intention at all.
Thank you.
We're going to be cleaning that wood shed up too, and that in that, uh, you know, that scrap wood. All that stuff's going to be addressed and cleaned up nicely. But I have no plan to mess with her privacy wall of trees there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the question.
Is there any else? Members of the community who have any questions regarding the proposed re-subdivision application? Please feel free to speak up if I don't see you here. Okay, um. So I'm I'm scanning the proposed motion to prepare by staff. Um, and it talks about the fee in lieu of, which I fully support. I mean, we want to be, in my opinion, you want to be consistent how we treat this. Obviously, there's no existing sidewalks. It doesn't make sense to request or require the applicant to put in sidewalks along the frontage. Um, so in my, in my opinion, the condition eighteen is appropriate. But just listen to some of the other dialogue of the commissioners. I don't know if we're all on the same page regarding proposed condition number eighteen. Regarding fee and lieu of the sidewalks. So I I I kind of want to begin the conversation there. That that's what's, that's what we have to react to.
Jim, I concur, um, or Joe, I concur. I feel like it's just. Part of a the development cost of creating a lot. That you contribute to the sidewalk fund of the town.
I, could I say something about that? This is Jim Daniel.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
You know, I grew up in that town a long time and uh. Rode bikes to school. There was another, a lot of sidewalk to ride in that town. I lived in town for thirty years before I left for just about uh. Twenty-five and uh. You know, there's, there's nothing even remotely close that is going to connect, and I could understand contributed to some sidewalk. If there was some sidewalk in the area town that I was going to be using, but there's nothing even remotely close that I would probably put a foot on.
What what the condition actually refer requires is that there is a separate sidewalk fund. That um, developers or applicants contribute to. And and the community makes the decisions regarding where future sidewalks are going to be installed. And we use to supplement public funds, we 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 draw down from this account. So given example, there is a proposal to put in some sidewalks along Reservoir Road. Um, are basically around Broadbrook School where there aren't none today. So uh, some of that's being funded by public dollars, and some it's being funded out of the community, the the sidewalk fund. So if this application passes, we would. We would take the fee that we require from this subdivision, and they would just add to the pool of funds for installation of sidewalks. At another location deemed appropriate in East Windsor. Maybe not anywhere near where you where where this house is.
I I understand exactly what you're saying now, and uh, I have no objection. I understand what you're saying.
So I I don't hear the felt my ref fellow commissioner members all chiming in here. So it looks like, are we comfortable of closing the public hearing and moving forward from here?
Comfortable.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the re-subdivision application.
I'll move to close the public hearing, P Z. Twenty twenty-one dash eleven for a two lot re-subdivision application. Twenty-four Rockville Road, owner James Daniel, applicant Tom Crockett at L.
There's a motion to close the public hearing for the re-subdivision application. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, Guy has got, I think she indicated that Tom was the applicant and Jim was the owner. I think you just want to make a note that's the reverse of that, if that's important.
It's important to him, I'm for sure.
Okay, I will correct slash amend my um. Motion, so that the owner. Is Tom Crockett at all, and the applicant is James Daniel.
Okay, so there's a amended motion. Is there a second?
Second.
For the amended motion, any further discussion or any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
See five hands, or it passes unanimously. Um. Uh, is the commission ready to take action? You feel like you have enough information to make a informed decision on this one?
I'm all set to go.
Good, good to go.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion for approval on the re-subdivision application.
Um, I would propose before we go to approval, we um. Do the waiver of the streetlights. And. Um, indicate the fee in lieu of sidewalks. Well, I guess it's been clarified, so it's not a waiver. So just the streetlight waiver.
Okay, and right now the motion. Okay, we're motion.
So I think.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, and that that that's correct. Because a motion takes us a waiver to, it requires a super majority. If the waiver doesn't pass, uh, we may have to tweak the conditions of approval accordingly.
So I think all we have to do is a streetlight waiver.
Correct. So go right ahead.
Okay. I would move to approve the waiver. For streetlights under section six point four for the application, P Z. Twenty twenty-one dash eleven, a two lot re-subdivision, twenty-four Rockville Road. The owner is Tom Crockett at L, and the applicant is James Daniel.
There is a motion for approval of one of the way for the waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Gaudy has a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Waiver passes unanimously, so the regular conditions of approval?
Now I think I can do a motion to approve the application, P Z. Twenty twenty-one dash eleven for a two lot re-subdivision application, twenty-four Rockville Road. Owner, Tom Crockett at all. Applicant, James Daniel. And it would reference. The plans, findings, conditions. One through nineteen, all found in the memo from Michael D'Amato. Revised, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
There's a motion for approval for the re-subdivision application and relevant conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye, raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye. I see five hands. It's unanimous. I believe there's one more thing that we should do is accept the withdrawal of the special use permit application. Applicant, formally accept that. I see Mike D'Amato shaking his head. Okay, yeah.
And I will move to accept the withdrawal of application, P Z. Twenty twenty-one dash twelve for a special permit for a rear lot at twenty-four Rockville Road. The applicant would be. James Daniel, and the owner would be Tom Crockett at all.
There's a motion, accept the withdrawal, the special use application for the rear lot. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for vote. All those in favor say aye, raise their hand.
Aye.
Five hands, that's unanimous. I I guess you you definitely have your approval. Very good.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next up, under new business. P Z twenty twenty-one dash oh nine, one twenty-four Newberry Road, special use permit application for contractors' office and storage yard. So this one earlier tonight, for if anyone had forgotten, we closed the public hearing. And are we ready to deliver? And are we ready to deliberate on this one or we're just ready to move to the motion for approval?
I'm ready to go.
Do we need to address the sidewalks?
We do. That's part of, that's part of the staff memo, correct? So in my view of this one, you know, it's a requirement, it's, I mean, it is in the commercial development requirement. Certain size development required sidewalks. There are no sidewalks to my knowledge in this, on this part of Newberry Road, nor do I envision a future. There is no future plan for sidewalks down in this area. And to me, I think it's reasonable to to have the applicant contribute or, you know, fee in lieu of for a sidewalk at a more appropriate location in the town. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but that's my opinion.
I agree. I agree completely.
I think that's consistent.
Is that the way the the draft staff memo was written along those lines? I'm trying to find that now.
I was just reading for that. Number five C. Address seems to address it.
I'm just pulling that up now. Okay, five C. Yes. Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. The regulation allows for a minimum of forty percent on the fee in lieu of. And is it the commission's desire to set it at forty percent? I guess I should ask that with the last one as well.
So it's a minimum, the regulations of minimum of forty percent?
Says of at least forty percent. That's correct.
I think we have to look into what other towns are doing here, and we have to talk with Lenny about that.
Mike Klosowski, you had your hand up?
Yeah, haven't we kind of addressed this previously that Len was the one that set the cost per linear foot? And we followed that until he felt it that it needed to be revised, that it no longer met current market conditions.
I think what Clark is talking about are two different things. Am I, am I not? So the unit price of the sidewalk is definitely set by the town engineer. I mean, that changes due to the market and that we have no control over it. And that should be reviewed at whatever intervals are appropriate by the town engineer. What Clark is making reference to is the percentage.
Yeah.
It's a minimum of forty percent, which are two, two, two different animals. And I don't think Lenny has, has the purview to weigh in on that element of it. That's the commission's purview. And from, and from based on past experiences, I don't recall any application in recent times where we've required a fee more than forty percent, right or wrong? I mean, I think that's, in quite honestly, I don't know if we really even
Even thought about it.
Entertained anything else. Yeah. Yeah, we've always gone with the minimum, and Clark is right. We have the, we have the, let's say authority, we have the latitude of requiring something more. But I personally, I think that this whole issue regarding sidewalks probably needs to be administered, I mean, reviewed as part of our review of the zoning regs. But, but that doesn't happen, that doesn't, that doesn't help moving this application forward tonight at all. So in my recommendation is just to stick with a minimum forty percent. I don't know how the other commission members feel, but Clark is right. We have the last of the more.
I feel like we have to treat the people in front of us today the way we've been treating everybody else. We can't arbitrarily change.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Clark, are you comfortable with that?
I am. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Okay, if everybody is ready, I will move to approve application. PZ twenty twenty-one dash nine for one twenty-four Newberry Road, a special permit for a contractor's office and storage yard. Applicant Scott Cota, owner Newberry Group LLC. It's in an M one zone. And the motion disapproval is granted in accordance with the reference plans and the conditions and modifications all outline its numbered one through twenty are the conditions. And the reference plans are site plan and an architectural plan, all of which are found in a memo from Mike D'Amato. Revised April eighth, twenty twenty-one.
There's a motion for approval on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none. A call for a vote. All those in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see five hands. Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on a new business. PZ twenty twenty-one dash oh seven, one forty-two North Road, special permit application for a barber shop. Also, we closed the public hearing for this one earlier tonight. And I would presume that we're ready to take action on this one as well tonight.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I would just know that under the application summary, I failed to correct the address. It looks very similar to your memo from the back building, the nail salon in the back building, and I neglected to take that out. I would also ask Mr. Faraday about the address, the unit letter. It's my understanding J Salon is E and the bakery is F. So I'm not sure if that makes the barber shop E plus. I don't know whether Mr. Faraday is aware of that.
Yeah, they actually, they spoke to me about that. I can, hold on, they have, it's either in a text or an email.
It may be irrelevant for tonight's discussion where I think we're all aware of that it's the unit between those two. But I just wanted to make sure that the record reflected that there are technically two unis at this very moment, unless it's been corrected since I was out there.
Okay, yeah, I can look and try and find. It's not in my text. It must be in an email somewhere.
I would agree that this is probably an administrative item just to kind of clarify.
Okay.
Um, so if someone wants to offer a motion for approval on this one?
I'll move to approve application. PZ twenty twenty-one dash seven for a special use permit application for a barber shop to be located at one forty-two North Road. Map. One twenty-four, block twenty-four, lot fifteen. It's a B three zone. The approval is granted subject to conformance with the submitted application, supporting materials and public hearing presentation. And three findings and one condition specified in the memo from Clark Chapin, Director of Planning and Community Development, dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
There's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none. A call for a vote. All those in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see five hands. It's unanimous. Congratulations, Brett. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along in our agenda, the correspondence. There is an April sixth, twenty twenty-one letter from Paul Holman and Coleman regarding a solar project to be located in Ellington. Was this a discussion item with a Clark or Mike, or this is just for our information? Okay.
Just for your information, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Under our business meeting. One thing, item A, election of officers. I believe that you folks graciously nominated me as chairman back in November, when we had a full commission at that time, we didn't have enough. We didn't have any nominations for vice chair and secretary. So we didn't have a full board until a couple of weeks ago. We had a lot of things on our agenda, so we moved it to tonight's meeting. So at this time, are there any nominations for vice chair of the planning and zoning commission? I am not going to be nominating myself. Any nominations?
I nominated Anne, since she was doing such a great job reading all everything that needs to go into the agenda and all the applications.
I second that.
And I nominated Mike for secretary.
So let's take one of the office, every office at a time here. So are there any other nominations for vice chair? So Anne's been nominated and second. Anne, do you accept the nomination? Your, your microphone is muted.
Sorry. Yes.
Okay, so you would accept the nomination. Okay, let's move on to nominations for secretary. So Commissioner Thurs, you made a nomination?
Yeah. If he accepts it, I'm gonna give him a vote.
So, so you made one nomination, Commissioner Klosowski. Is there any other nominations for secretary? Nominations are closed. So Mike, will you accept the nomination for secretary?
Yes, I will.
I volunteer to be treasurer.
Brad, you could be sergeant at arms.
All right. So how about someone offer approval, make a motion to approve our current slate of nominations for vice chair for Anne and the secretary for Commissioner Klosowski. So someone offer that motion?
And make a motion that we accept the slate as presented.
There's a motion for approval for the proposed slate. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none. I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. You guys got a pay raise. Thank you very much. Okay. And the last thing under our business meeting, and I will give Clark and Mike an opportunity to see if there was anything else. Under the ZEO report, is that just informational purposes? Is there anything any commission member want to talk about that's on there? Ask any leading questions? Okay, go ahead, Anne.
I'm curious. Corey Meadows is the proposal we keep talking about.
Yeah, right now it's a text amendment. Correct.
Yeah. It appears to be on this list. I'm wondering.
I saw that also. I don't have it in front of me, but.
Item was reviewed by, I'm guessing inland water.
Yeah, there was a complaint made to that commission.
Yeah. Historic filling and pump. So it's something that happened long ago, like, you know. Or something or.
So the spreadsheet you have before you is a compilation of both zoning and wetlands inquiries and complaints. So some of them are not under planning and zonings purview. That is one that has been brought to our attention and was brought to the inland wetland and water courses agencies attention at their last meeting. And I know Ruth is preparing a staff report at their request for their next meeting.
I guess my only curiosity is if it ends up getting to a place where we're talking about a site plan. And there's something that has to get corrected. I will hopefully, or you'll need to be aware of that.
Right, and like any other subdivision. It would require inland wetlands approval prior to planning and zoning anyway.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other comments on the ZEO report before we adjourn for the night, is there any final thoughts or comments from staff, Clark, or either Mike?
No, I'm all set.
All set.
Any comments from the commission? Anything? Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for German.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there, there's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion? Of course not. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night.
Productive meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all.